Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, March 16th, and we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present in the room, and we are also using a hybrid system for our meeting for folks on, in Zoom land, to utilize the raise hand feature in order to let us know that you have comments or questions for us. We will begin with our department updates, and we have Ms. Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning to you as well. What a difference that we're moving forward, right? Today, our two metric score and our advisory level are both blue on that Indiana state map. And I think that you will see a lot of blue on both of those, the two metric and the advisory map this week. Those will be posted later today. Our CDC community level is currently at the low level, so we're very pleased with where our numbers are going. COVID-19 is still circulating, although the numbers are much lower than they've been in the past weeks. If you have health concerns, you're not up to date on your vaccination, or you are just concerned about the virus, then wearing your mask makes a lot of sense. If you are traveling, do check the transmission levels of where you're going and plan accordingly. We know that there are other countries who are seeing, you know, increases in their numbers. There are other parts of our work country that still have elevated numbers. So do pay attention to where you're going and you're traveling. But in general, if the, if your community level is low, universal mask wearing is not indicated at this time. So that's where we currently are. Now, there are also places like healthcare facilities that still require masks to be worn. And those are not the typical public places that we think about when we're talking about being indoors in public places. They are healthcare facilities, and they have other reasons to be wearing those masks. And then again, businesses may choose to require masks if they want to. Masks are still currently required on public transportation, and that is per a federal order. So there are still places where you need to wear those masks, so make sure that you have that handy. In terms of testing, the gravity site off of Curry Pike is open through April 1st. And I would encourage anybody who's been traveling, maybe it's spring break or for other reasons, you're concerned because you've been traveling, maybe where you went, you have symptoms, then take advantage of that testing site when you return or upon your symptoms. Certainly, anyone who's been exposed or who has symptoms should be tested accordingly. And the site does use PCR testing. They do not use rapid antigen testing. And again, April 1st is their last day. Influenza is currently circulating at a minimal activity level. There are other viruses that are circulating that cause colds and upper respiratory infections, and that can sometimes make it more difficult to determine if you've got influenza or a cold or you've got COVID. So getting the appropriate testing, again, staying home if you were ill and you're symptomatic is still wise. We did see a rise in influenza cases in December. It fell, and we are seeing a slow increase in those numbers of what's circulating, although it's still at a minimal level. And we're at a point in the flu season where we would see, expect to see some increases. So far this influenza season, Indiana has had 26 people die from influenza-related conditions. So with that, I will just end, and that spring is coming. It's here. And I wish you all good health. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? Yes, I've heard that there's a slight rise in COVID in other places. Is there any sense that there's a new variant?
At this time, the variant that's really being watched is a subvariant of Omicron. It's nicknamed stealth, and it doesn't mean that it isn't picked up on tests or that the vaccine isn't effective against it. It's just that it, it's a little bit different when they're doing the surveillance and the sequencing on that. Right now, the information that we have is that it, while it may be a little bit easier to transmit, the severe illness is not there. We're not seeing that at this time. So other countries are experiencing an increase with that. So far, we have not seen that take hold here.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
It's just nice that at least we're getting a break.
Indeed.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here and all of the information, and it's nice to have good news. Appreciate that. All right. Mr. Crone, you have a department update for us, please? We always like hearing good news.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Crone, Facilities and Fleet Manager. I just wanted to give the Commissioners and anyone in the public who's been following this project a little update on where we are with our Alexander War Monument Restoration Project. The last of the panels is finished being carved now. They expect to take delivery of those next week. The contractors are going to begin work starting March 21st and running through approximately April 15th to clean and replace those panels that are damaged poorly. We will be closing down 12 parking spaces on the east side of the courthouse, running from the corner of Kirkwood Avenue. Those will be closed during that whole period. We will also be closing the sidewalk adjacent to those parking spaces only during work hours of the day. Each day, they will be taking those barricades back up so that foot traffic can continue in those areas. Contractor just came to us Monday morning, yesterday, Monday, what day am I lost? Anyway, contractor just come to me Monday morning trying to get this together. And so I'd really like to thank members of the Board of Public Works, Adam Lawson, the Director of Public Works, and Mike Stewart, the Planning Technician for the city's Engineering Department. We basically crammed a week's worth of work together in about four hours yesterday and made this happen so the city could give us approval to block those spaces. So we literally look forward to get this project done. It's been a long time in the making. And as a veteran myself, I really appreciate Mary Elfman and Steve Miller's work on this project, trying to get it to move forward. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you for the good news, and thank you to the city for their assistance. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great work. All right. Exciting to get that done. All right. Any other department updates? TSD, would you be able to add the participant frame to the monitor? Thank you so much. Just the attendee side is fine. Well, it doesn't need to be full. It just needs to be there on the side. Thank you so much. All right. With that, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items not on our agenda. If you have comments, we will ask for your name and ask if you are a Monroe County resident. You will have three minutes to speak, and at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, you have 30 seconds to wrap up your statement. Again, this section is for items that are not on the agenda. And when we do have our agenda items and public comment is invited, you will also have that three-minute limitation. Look for that. Let's see if there are any members of the public here in the courthouse or via Zoom who wish to speak. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, please. Move approval of the minutes from March 9th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 9th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. All right. Next item, please. Move approval of the claims document accounts payable March 16th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller joining us via Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $6,392,845.78. $3,778,001.65 was for local income tax or lit distribution for March. Of that amount, $788,266.06 was for public safety lit specifically. $1,625,000 was for Monroe County Treasurer for a number of fund-to-fund transfers. $1.2 million was for the Hunter's Creek Road Phase 2 and 3 transfer. $400,000 was for sample road Phase 1 and 2, which both of those are local road and street. And the remaining $25,000 of that fund-to-fund transfer was for vaccine administration reimbursement, all per council March 8 meeting. $242,790.83 was for public safety answering point or PISA let distribution for March for Central Dispatch. $237,443.27 was for wheel and certex distribution for January. And finally, $119,385.05 was for Everside Health, primarily for deferred revenue for April, May, and June.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, it just seemed like a really big chunk when I looked at that.
Any comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Please raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the claims document accounts payable March 16th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. And we'll move on to the, oh, sorry, we do have a report received. That is from the treasurer. It's February 2022, so I want to note that for the record. Now we'll move on to new business. Thank you. Move approval of a public hearing and review of ordinance 2022-07, reauthorization of the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, 1138.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Gregory here from the Auditor's Office, joining us via Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, just as a function of state law, the cum cap rate changes. So this ordinance, well, the hearing and then the ordinance will reestablish the rate to the maximum level. It's just an annual housekeeping item.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? No, what was in the documentation seemed pretty straightforward. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
And so the level is .0333, just for the record. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Whoa, I did not, I neglected to open a public hearing on this, so let me do that first. First, I will open the public hearing on this item to see if there's any commentary from Zoom or from anyone present today in the courthouse. And we do not see anyone, so I will close the public hearing. And now, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2022-07 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. And now we'll move on to the next item, please. Move approval for the public hearing and review of ordinance 2022-08, reauthorization of the Major Bridge Fund, 1171.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory, would you tell us all about this, please?
Of course. This is the same idea. We're just reestablishing the max rate. So this is the same rate as the cum cap fund. It's the .0333.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm going to see first if there are any questions from my colleagues. Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
So I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing on this item. If anybody in the courthouse or via Zoom has a comment to make on this item, please come to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2022-08 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, next item, please. Move approval of integral Realty Resources Agreement, fund name reassessment, fund number 1224-34350-0000 in an amount not to exceed $15,600.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Sessor Sharp here, joining us via Zoom. To tell us about that?
Yeah. Morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Thank you. I don't see my picture up here, but I probably did something wrong. Thanks. I'm down here in the here. Hang on a minute. SD is asking me. There we go. Yes, ladies, what this is, you want me to explain what this is?
Sure.
Okay. I'm coming to you guys with a contract for appraisals on the Holiday Inn Express. That's over there on 3769, you know, right by Texas Roadhouse, the great big huge hotel there. This has been under appeal for the last two years. And the board has agreed, the property tax assessment board has agreed that we denied their appeal. And then I took it to the board to see if we, because we're going to have to have an appraisal on this. To give you an idea, this is woefully under assessed as far as I am concerned, and I say that to them every time they come into appeal. But the only way I'm going to prove my point is with an appraisal. Michael, David Hall, who has done a few appraisals for us, we've contracted with him or hope to contract with him, and he's got a letter of engagement. It's for two years. It's for 2020 and 2021. Just to give you and the public an idea of what we're talking about on this kind of issues. This Holiday Inn is, I would, I would say the nicest hotel that we have in Monroe County, and I think if anyone's been there, they would agree to that. And I know it's always busy. Anyway, we have $7.5 million in 2020 on this property. The tax rep wants me to take it down to 5.1. You guys can do really quick math there. That's a big loss of value. Of course, we denied it, and then they came back in 2021. They appealed to this, they're appealing to the state. In 2021, recognizing COVID, and I'm saying this very carefully. COVID was horrible. We all know that. Did it impact the business community? Of course it did. Did it impact hotels? Of course it did. I only had two hotels appeal, and that is this Holiday Inn Express. And I think it's the Comfort Inn, represented by the same tax rep, Todd Behr. But on the, the one that we're talking about right now, we took it, recognizing that there was probably some loss of income, we took down the Holiday Inn Express to 6.7 million. He comes in and out, wants $3.6 million. Can't do it. Will not do it. So what we have to do in order to go to the state, I can sit there and give them all the facts and figures that I have, but the state will only really look at an appraisal. And that's what I'm asking you guys to approve. The appraisal, I think, is very, 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 it's going to be for two years. And if you guys, I'm sure know about appraisals, each year stands alone, and they have to, you trend up, trend down, do all that kind of good stuff. Phase 1 is just the start of this. There's a couple of phases, but the bottom line is the appraisal will not exceed $15,600. That's everything for two years, broken down. And, you know, it's really interesting. I got an email from my appraisal company yesterday what they're going to go at to this Holiday Inn. We get no data when we have hearings, very little data. It's very, very little data. You know, you need expenses and income and all that kind of stuff. We get a little bit, but we don't get what we should. And that's where an appraiser comes in, and they will be subpoenaed, and this is what they have to do. The scope of work that David Hall is asking, he's going in and asking for every bit of the income over the last two years through COVID, all sorts of other stuff. I mean, I want to get into that here. It is a massive undertaking. And frankly, I wouldn't be surprised if they refuse to do it or just pull the, pull the hearing. I wouldn't be surprised. I took one look at it and I thought, wow. And I don't say that too often. But the things they're asking these people, of these people, they won't give that to me, but they'll have to give it to an appraiser. So I don't know what's going to happen if they pull it. We just had that happen last month. I was going to come to you guys with a, another appraisal that I needed to do. And for some reason, it was on Menards. On some reason, Menards pulled every appeal in the state of Indiana. And I had four years of appeals at the state, and I just get an email. We, all the assessors that had Menards got an email last month that they were canceling it. So I don't know what's going on out there right now. It just seems kind of strange what's, what's happening. I'm down to only this, this and the Comfort Inn, which is nothing compared to this out there of the big, big value things. But I really need, I'm going to have to have the appraisal to, to even sit down in front of the Indiana Board. And that doesn't say I'm going to win, but I, I don't usually lose either. One thing I am going to ask the board this time, and I'm hoping that if the appraisal shows that, and I think it's going to, that we're undervalued, and I'm going to, if we are undervalued, we're going to ask the board to raise the last two years on this. So any questions, ladies?
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, Sessor Sharp. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, just thank you for explaining that the valuation could go up from what you had it.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. It's, I know you do well with these appeals, so good luck with this one.
Thank you very much. I think you guys know that we've settled blows. That's another one that every time I turn around, they appeal every year. We have a stipulation with Lowe's that the other side, Figury, the law firm that appeals it every year, we finally stipulated, and we're going to lose a little bit. But once again, we probably saved a couple of million each year from what Figury wanted with the stipulation. We just can't, we can't continue going years with these things sitting up at the state. That hurts this whole county. And I don't like that, but I don't have any control over the state. So I'm hoping that we can put a lot of this to bed, and maybe they'll go away for a year, so we'll see what happens. But thank you, ladies, very, very much.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. If you're in the courthouse, come to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Integral Realty Resources Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Thank you.
Move approval of BNL IT Services for Election Support, fund name, election fund, fund number 121650-0062 in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I believe we have Ms. Martin here with us via Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. This is our contractor that we, that sets up all of our poll sites for the election and for early voting. They also do all of our ADA compliance fixing at our poll sites. Make sure that we have all of our connectivity correct. They make sure that all of our storage of our equipment is, is put away completely. They install upgrades. They create the polling location maps and equipment catalog. And they establish our equipment to be used at each polling location. And I believe you do have a copy of the contract.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I didn't quite understand item 1 in the contract where it says that they shall provide the services as directed by the Monroe County Clerk and/or the Monroe County Election Board. Is that okay, that it's either or like that?
I can, I can respond to that. I believe that county legal indicated that there would not be a problem based, if you wanted it, to just be the clerk. But both have statutory duties, and the clerk is part of the election ward, so it's kind of six and one half of it.
For expediency, yeah. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
No, I don't.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or please come to the podium in the courthouse. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the BNL IT Services Agreement for Election Support signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item, please. Move approval of Hilton Garden Inn Agreement for Primary Election Training Location, fund name, election fund, fund number 1215-3006-0062 in an amount of $4,880.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Martin?
Okay, this is for our poll worker training. It's roughly 16 days of training at different hours of the day. And we started this process in 2021 at the beginning. In 2020, we had our polling, our training for our poll workers at the convention center. And it wasn't available for this election, so we found the Hilton, and they were able to give us some space there.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I don't understand why we're asking county taxpayers to pay close to $5,000 when we have space, I thought, in the showers building for the training. And I assume we could make parking available for people there also? Plus, the rooms lock, and we have more control over that, right?
Well, how am I going to get the people in after hours? The building closes, showers closes up, and without being an employee, how can I get people in there for training?
Well, since we have Mr. Crone here, I don't know if you'd like to address that or Ms. Purdy? Well, since we have, uh, Mr. Crone here, I don't know if you'd like to address that or Ms. Purdy?
First, Mr. Crone.
Uh, well, there's a couple of ways we could address that situation. Um, and with that having swipe locks on both that, uh, the showers door and that office door there. Uh, it could be done that the clerk's badges could be activated on those door locks. Uh, we could also possibly speak with T S D or we could make some arrangements if we knew when those trainings were scheduled. Uh, maintenance or some way we could have those doors unlocked during those hours. So I believe we can address that situation with little to no problem.
Great. And, and if it's a Saturday, you can arrange for parking uh, to be cordoned off in the showers lot with the market going on. I know sometimes that lot gets full.
Yes, typically even on market days, that lot's never completely full, but we can, we can make arrangements to secure that lot if that's the case.
Okay, great. Ms. Purdy, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, only that I, I think that we can definitely make arrangements to make this work for the election training. Um, we've done it in the past at this particular building, so, um, I think that wouldn't have any problem with it happening.
Okay, I'm gonna throw one more problem into the, into the mix here. Uh, we've already put a thousand dollars down on this room to reserve it.
Um, I can kind of speak to this a little bit, um, because the contract, the, the, the item on the agenda is an offer. And, um, it reads specifically that this is an offer and it's not an executed contract until it's signed by both parties. Uh, the Hyatt has signed it, the commissioners have not yet. Um, further up in the contract, it reads that, um, only after the execution of the contract, it's on page four.
Page four.
Yeah, it says, um, in the event of cancellation by clerk's office, blah, 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 30 days after the signing of this agreement and 60 days prior to event start date, start date, there's a thousand dollar, um, will be due to the garden, the Hilton Garden Inn. So, um, not sure. There's nothing in here that indicates that any money has been put on.
A thousand dollars has been paid on this.
And so it's not a fully executed contract, so you, they would have to give that back to you.
I mean, we can ask, of course.
I think that I would work through our legal department because, again, this is not a, it's not an executed document, so you can change your mind up until, I think, the 23rd. And then actually beyond that, if something should happen, I would highly recommend that you work through our legal department and, um, see what's going on. I, I don't know why you would have put a thousand dollars down. Um, there's, I didn't see anything that indicates there's a, you know, a holding fee?
I, I am positive a thousand dollars was put down in October.
Okay, um, well, this, in October, that was a long time ago. I mean, this contract is, it was.
Oh, excuse me, I just, someone just yelled to me, it was paid in September. September 22nd.
Okay, I don't know how to respond to that as this is a, this is a, an agreement for March of this year. And there's no indication of any kind of down payment and it clearly states that there is no loss to the county until this becomes an executed document and that you, um, and then, and then back out of it, basically. I could, I could ask Mr. Baker to come up if you like from legal. I did talk with him about this.
Well, let's, let's see if Commissioner Jones has any questions first.
Um, I think I'd like to hear what Mr. Baker has to say.
Well, how about we continue this to the work session? And then we can address it then. Does that refer everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this item to our work session.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor of continuing to, uh, today's work session signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Okay, so we'll come back to this, okay? Ms. Martin, thank you.
That'd be fine.
Right, next item, please. Move approval of Hart Inter-Civic Agreement. Fund name, election fund, fund number 1215-22002-0062 in an amount not to exceed $4,450. Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Martin, please tell us all about this.
Okay, I love saying these words. I don't need the money. They're gonna do it for us, uh, like we did it last year and they're not gonna charge us for it. The LAT is scheduled for tomorrow and it has been advertised, starts at 8:00 AM.
Right, so 8:00 AM at Election Central is when they're running the test on the
Equipment.
On the equipment. Great, thank you. So, so, uh, you're saying we do not need this agenda item at all?
I do not, I do not.
Excellent. All right, so, uh, I'm gonna, um, move that, um, we, um, remove Agenda Item F, Hart Inter-Civic Agreement. Second. We have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor of removing Agenda Item F, Hart Inter-Civic Agreement, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. All right, next item, please. Thank you, Ms. Martin, we'll see you in a minute. Move approval of Strauss or Construction Company Change Order Number One for Election Operations at 302 South Walnut Street. Fund name and number to be determined in an amount of $6,735. We have a motion. Can we get a second please?
Second.
All right, that's right. We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Crone, would you tell us all about this, please?
Yes, uh, we'd originally, uh, designed for a 12 by 20 ballot room to be created inside the, uh, old Napa facility now referred to as Election Operations. Uh, after a little further review, it was requested by the clerk's office and voter registration that we expand those dimensions to 16 by 24 to allow for additional shelving and operation space within that room. So in order to address that, uh, materials change was required to go from two by six construction materials to two by 12, which comes with an increased cost. There was also additional lighting and additional electrical outlets that would have to be installed per code on that space. So this is a request to approve the change order submitted by Strauss for $6,735 to do that design plan check.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens? No, has construction started?
They've begun, uh, they've already put in the underground plumbing for the ADA compliant bathrooms and all the materials are brought in to start construction with. So, uh, they should be getting back on that any day now. Uh, so once we have the agreement signed, I can provide Strauss or P O and we can make sure everything's going.
Great. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, at this point, does it look like it's still on schedule to be done before early voting starts?
Strauss are still conveying to me that they will be done in time. There's, uh, with them and their, and the scope of work they're doing, it does, we did have to push some other contractors off a little bit for some of the other work that's, uh, required. So, uh, it's kind of playing this day by day to see how quickly we can work it out.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent. I appreciate that you've got a lot of contractors to juggle and thank you for your hard work on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item from either the net user room or via Zoom. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand, please. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Strauss or Construction Company Change Order Number One, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please. Move a true approval of MEC Tech Inc. Agreement to Replace Water Heater in the Monroe County Jail. Fund name, cumulative capital development, fund number 1138, in an amount not to exceed $19,000. Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Crone, tell us all about this.
Uh, yes, the water heating system in the Monroe County Jail is comprised of two commercial grade units. Uh, one of those units has aged out and is actually in, uh, unrepairable service. So, um, one thing you should note is these aren't your traditional water heater like you find in your home. It's not heating 40 gallons or 60 gallons of water on a continuous cycle. This is actually a computer controlled device that superheats a very small amount of water and then implements that into the cold water supply on the hot side. So, much different than what you're finding in your home unit. So, uh, this agreement from MEC Tech is to take out the existing unit and, uh, install a new lock of our 399,000 BTU uh, condensing water heater system so we can provide adequate hot water to the entire jail facility.
Right. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
Only that when I saw that number, I was glad I don't have to pay that in my own house.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, how is this affecting the jail? Are they having problems because of not enough hot water?
Yes, currently, uh, especially during peak usage, uh, understand that they have commercial washing machine units to wash all the clothing and bedding for the jail as well as, uh, commercial grade dishwashing systems. So there's a large, big demand for hot water. Uh, at peak times, uh, we are seeing the water temperatures drop down below what's acceptable into the seventies and sometimes into the sixties in, in certain locations. So rather than the 90 to 110 degree that you typically would see, so.
Do you know about how long it'll take to replace it?
Um, I don't know. They're only talking a couple of days. They didn't give me an exact amount. Part of that being, uh, once they tear into the system, there's some gaskets that's in question that we don't know if we're gonna have to replace, that they're gonna have to order, but um, they are going to have to wa- order the water condensing unit. It's like everything else electronic right now, it's on back order. So uh, once we have it, they only expect a couple of days, but the way the system is designed, it won't cause a disruption to what we currently have in the jail. They'll be able to bypass that, keep what hot water we have flowing and then get the other system installed.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you so much for working on this in such a timely manner. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the net user room or via Zoom. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. Seeing no public comment, um, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the MEC Tech Inc. Agreement for the, um, water heater at jail, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Uh, next item, please. Move Approval of Resilient Strategies LLC Agreement for Statement of Work Report. Fund name, Health, Fund Number 1159 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Second. We have a motion and a second and we have Ms. Cottle joining us again from the Health Department. Good morning again, tell us all about this.
Good morning again. So we have had some discussions with you about the need to do an after action report, uh, so that we can assess the response to COVID-19 and look at some improvements that we can make for future circumstances. Uh, pandemics or emergencies, what we can do differently. Um, and with that, that's also a requirement in our, uh, Public Health Preparedness Grant. Um, so we have been talking to a couple of different, uh, work groups, but we would like to go with resilient strategies. Uh, they've had the most responsive, um, uh, quote, it, it is, uh, $6,850, which is extremely reasonable. Uh, we did, I have made this request not to exceed 10,000 so that if we find that we need to make an adjustment or add a session or something, there's a little bit of room in there to make that change. This group did our District Eight, um, After Action Report, uh, for kind of phase, I'm gonna say Phase One of the pandemic, uh, for 2020. And that went very well. They've gotten good reports on that. They've worked with Hendrix County on their COOP plan and several other counties on different, uh, things like that. So they are familiar with us. They're familiar with, um, this process and the things that are needed and we would like to get going so we can get this finished by June.
Excellent, thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
No, I'm just glad that we have some wonderful folks in the Health Department who are always on top of things like this.
Commissioner Jones?
It, it sounds like this is gonna give us some very useful information, um, in case we end up facing a situation like this again.
Let's hope that doesn't happen. No, I appreciate the fast work and it's nice that they're familiar with, um, Monroe County, so good work finding this group. Uh, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the net user room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Agreement with Resilient Strategies, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please. Move Approval of Indiana Department of Health STD and Other Infectious Diseases Grant. Fund name, STD Strengthening Prevention. Fund number eight, 112, in an amount of $170,000. Second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Cottle, tell us all about this one, please.
Yeah, as you know, we've had since the eighties, uh, grant funds for our STD program to support disease intervention specialists. Uh, we have that. It, it is a separate grant, but really, I think with, after, with the pandemic and the funds that are coming into public health, uh, to address other issues that we have. These funds have become available to us and will add an additional disease intervention specialist. Um, we do plan and we had talked with the state about this possibility that, um, that they can work, uh, offsite with a partner with us. They will, you know, we cover 12 counties, so this position will also do some, a little more traveling perhaps than our current people do. Uh, but we're excited to add someone, um, for a year or two years, maybe longer depending on the funding for this. So we're excited to get another person on board and, as you know, we had, uh, DIS leave recently um, and move on to other things. And so we've had the position posted and so we will be able to hopefully fill this and the current vacancy very quickly.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
No, I was surprised to see it was a 12 county region, um, recovering.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's nice that we're able to add staff here. This is a wonderful thing, so thank you for all your hard work on this. It's great news. Uh, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the courthouse. All right, seeing none, um, come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health STD and Infectious Diseases Grant, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. All right, next item, please. Move Approval of Matrix Integration Assisting Services for Election Operations at 302 South Walnut Street. Fund name, cumulative capital development, fund number 1138-30025, in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Second. We have a motion and a second and we have Mr. Evans here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, so of course, the, the challenge we have with the Napa, uh, building as an early voting site is, uh, we arrived at that as an early voting site months and months after we should have, you know, so in terms of getting the computer infrastructure in place to use it for the purpose that they're wanting, we have really had to scramble around. You just can't go out and buy firewalls anymore. You know, the firewalls that I would put in place to, uh, put them on our wide area and network are backordered and probably won't be available until well after the, the primary is done, probably not even the general election. So we've had to get creative. Uh, the actual voting data that goes on at the Napa building is not, is, is being taken care of with the different means. Uh, so what, what we're talking about here is merely the data that is coming from the surveillance cameras, from the swipe locks. And then I believe they're gonna have a couple, uh, computers, uh, either desktop or laptop there onsite doing office organizational work. Uh, so it's not actual polling data that is gonna be going over this, but nonetheless, uh, there is still proprietary data. Uh, so we have to set up an encrypted wide area and network node. Uh, and so the way we came up to do with it was to take, uh, one of our old firewalls. And so the way we came up to do with it was to take one of our old firewalls that we replaced last year and re-commission it and rebuild it and put that in place. So essentially, this is a fairly inexpensive project. I expect that the labor from the Matrix part of it to be less than $3,000, and that's going to be our sum total for that part of the project because we're reclaiming old hardware. So from that standpoint, that's kind of exciting because, you know, I always like, you know, getting stuff out of our store, storeroom, you know. So that's what this is all about. We're going to have Matrix come in and help out my network crew because it requires some specialized work.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Goodness?
Well, thank you for, again, coming up with a solution in a very, very tight time crunch. This is incredible. And it's reassuring to know that if we need it for the general election, that that will also be available.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, anything we put in place there will, of course, stay there for the general election, yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just sorry this had to be such a rushed effort to prepare for early voting, but it sounds like probably it's going to get pulled off.
We'll do what we can.
Yeah. Yep. I appreciate the hard work, and I know that there's a lot going on and a lot to manage, so good work getting this done. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or step up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Matrix Integration Services Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. Next item, please. Move approval of Ordinance 2022-03, Amendment Monroe County Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 802, Zones and Permitted Use.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have our interim director here, Ms. Nestor Jellin. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. So this is Ordinance 2022-3. This was an ordinance amendment to Chapter 802 that you reviewed in late February. I'm bringing it back to you this morning with some edits that I'd like to go through with you and then entertain a vote for today. So this is a public hearing on this item. So the amendment is to Chapter 802, which is the Zones and Permitted Uses chapter. And the purpose of the text amendment is to add scrap metal processing facility as a permitted use in the heavy industrial zone. When I brought this back in February, there were some concerns about the way that the ordinance was put in place and brought to you by the Plan Commission. It was forwarded with a favorable recommendation. So I do want to note that if the edits today go into effect by the Commissioners, it would have to go back to the Plan Commission for a final vote. But I will say that the facility that, or sorry, the scrap metal processing facility edits that we went ahead and made are listed in the agenda in the packet. So I want to go through those with you. So the edits proposed by staff include excluding the acceptance of white goods, which are generally appliances, that by design incorporate Freon-containing components. Another amendment that was made was that off-site remelting was added so that this type of processing does not occur onsite with the processing facility. And then added to the condition of a permitted use in the heavy industrial zone is that storage area must be on asphalt or concrete surface and must have a riparian buffer zone of at least 100 feet from each side of all intermittent and perennial streams as referenced in Chapter 825-3B. So I'll go ahead and go through the ordinance as well. I'll note that in the county area, the last time I checked, a few weeks ago, we have, and it shouldn't have changed since then, we have about 14 parcels that are zoned heavy industrial out of several thousand. So just to give everyone an idea of how frequently this use could be put into place. So this use would be going under the manufacturing, mining, construction, and industrial use category. And the items that are shown on the screen and, sorry, let me reshare that for a second. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. So the definition that you see on the screen for the scrap metal processing facility, the blue and red texts are some of the amendments that we made since the February hearing and that I just went over. And so we had also added in that Ferris Metal can also be at the processing facility since we wanted to align this with the Indiana Code as well. So this item, as I mentioned, would be permitted in the Heavy Industrial District if approved with a Condition 58, which reads that the facility is accessed and served by road infrastructure sufficient to safely transport scrap metal by truck bed, trailer, or semi-trailer, and is sufficiently buffered by natural objects, plantings, fences, or other appropriate means, so it is substantially screened from the main traveled ways of the system. The outdoor storage area shall be limited to 100,000 square feet or less and be located in an area that complies with the buildable area provision in Chapter 804-4E, and that the storage area must be on asphalt or concrete surface and must have a riparian buffer zone of at least 100 feet from each side of all intermittent and perennial streams as referenced in Chapter 825-3B. So with that, I could take any questions that you might have. The Plan Commission did forward this with a favorable recommendation by seven to zero.
Commissioner Jones?
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I have some comments, but I'm going to hold off on them. Let's see if there's anyone present who wishes to speak favorably about this ordinance. Looks like we have Mark Cranley. He'll have three minutes. Just verify your name, please.
I beg your pardon. I am opposed to the ordinance. Sorry.
We can, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I, I, I am opposed to the ordinance. I'm happy to discuss why, but I don't, I want to make sure because you hit the raised hand before you mentioned that you were going to. Reporting.
I, now we can't, we can't really hear you. You're muffled and it's not.
He's saying that he's raising his hand to speak later, after you've gone through people who are for it.
Yes, exactly right.
Okay. So anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Please come up to the podium. Just give us your name. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Larry Parsons, and I'm representing our family business Bedford Recycling. And originally, we'd had this property approved as a conditional use to put in a recycling facility, which would be similar to what you have at JB Salvage here in Bloomington. The differences would be that in what we're doing, JB started small, and then he added on to the facility. Our facility would start from the opening with good engineering design to it and design to handle everything that we want to handle in this area. And also, we would not be doing any auto salvage parts in storage of cars or anything like that at the facility. And this location is a good location for this operation. It's got the wastewater treatment plant to the north. It's got quarries to the south of it. It's got the trucking operation to the east and a stone cutting operation to the east of it also. And the other side of that is that we have sister companies in our group that do heavy manufacturing, production machining of automotive parts and so on. Getting this rezoned, manufacturing would allow us to potentially do the scrap recycling operation on this location. And also in the future, maybe production machining similar to what we're doing currently. And this rezoning was done because there was not any spot for scrap metal reclamation or recycling or collection in your current zoning that you had. So you're out, you're wanting to create a location to have that done within your ordinance. And that's where this would put, and it works well for what we might have for the future or what, what we would like to do. Were there any questions of me for what we have in plan?
Thank you.
Okay. And one other point, and again, I pointed out, we have sister companies. With that, we have about 450 employees among our group of companies, which means that we have enough resources to come in and do this to the level that it should be done to have a first-class recycling operation in Monroe County. And it would be your first operation. It's not within the city or within residential areas at that point in time.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? All right. Mark Cranley is still on to speak in opposition. Please go ahead and speak clearly.
Yes, good morning, and hopefully you hear me clearly.
Yes.
Excellent. I represent Republic Services of Indiana. We are next door to this proposed recycling facility. And as I've spoken at both the Planning Commission and earlier Commissioners' meetings, we oppose this project. We oppose both this ordinance and the next one, and I'm going to try and focus my arguments here just on changing the use definitions to allow a recycling facility use. First and foremost, this is a classic example of spot zoning, as you were just told, that we're rewriting the rules here to accommodate one specific project. And that's just simply not the way zoning should work. It should be an overall process, looking at what's best for the needs of the community as a whole and not one specific project. I think there's a lot that's unknown about this project, not the least of which is there's no commitment that this is actually going to be the recycling facility you're told. And in fact, the materials submitted and the statements made today show that all types of heavy industrial work could be done at this facility, which is right next to the water treatment plant, up gradient from a wetland area and a floodplain and near residential housing. For purposes of the recycling facility definition, I want to remind the Commissioners of the agreement that we have, Republic has, with the Monroe County Solid Waste District, which prevents facilities like this from operating within the district's borders on the penalty of the possible termination of that contract. Now, they have argued that they're not receiving solid waste and they're not subject to that ordinance or this county's ordinance dealing with solid waste and transfer stations. But they described this as a recycling transfer station in prior meetings. They're receiving solid waste, whether they're paying for it or not. They're receiving junk material, which is going to be solid waste and will trigger Republic's right under that contract. And I don't think the value of redefining the entire zoning code to accommodate this one facility is worthy, and it's spot zoning that ultimately hurts the county. And with that, I'll cede the rest of my time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. See if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition. Ms. Nestor Jellin, would you like to address what Mr. Schilling from our legal department has said about this regarding the issue that was just raised by Mark Cranley?
By Republic Services, you mean? Sure. So one thing I do want to address, since both comments were addressed particular to a specific property, the text amendment before you is not specific to a rezone. The next item on the agenda will address the rezone. But as Mr. Cranley had stated, that it was some sort of issue with Republic Services that if this facility goes in, that there would be some sort of issue with the contract. The parties to that contract is the Monroe County Solid Waste District. And the text amendment before you is a legislative act. Therefore, any legislative act that the Commissioners do would not vacate or be of issue to the contract between the Solid Waste District and Republic Services.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? So here's my concern. I was not present when this was heard and voted on at the Plan Commission. I would have voted no. I have a lot of concerns about the kinds of material. And I do appreciate the fact that we've really honed this down and limited this. And if I'm the only no vote, that's okay because I'm fine with that. But because this has been limited to a good extent to protect the public. And that's really what planning is all about, is protecting the public. So our staff here in our office has done some research with the Bedford Fire Department and found the reports that came out of the facility in Bedford. And it appears that there are explosions and fires in the crushers, excavator on fire. I have six reports in the last couple of years. At one point, somebody at the site in Bedford was cutting tank tracks. And actually, for about a week, a neighbor smelled burning rubber. And then the facility was told, you can't be doing that. So I just, I just feel like this is something that we just don't need to do. And the risk is greater than the reward. As much as I am a big fan of recycling and repurposing, a huge fan of it, I'm just really concerned about the potential for fires and crusher on fire and explosions and all of these things going on. And I just feel like we still haven't reached the point where I'm satisfied that we've limited the work here enough because apparently some materials from crane have been brought over to Bedford. Is that something that is allowed here? Well, by this ordinance, it would be. So, so that's my concern. That's why I'll be voting no. But unless there's anything else from the board, ready to pick about?
From what you said, I do have a question about this. Would this mean that it could allow munitions and ordinances, ordinance like that to come to this facility for recycling?
Sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
I'm concerned about whether or not this particular recycling facility would allow crane ordinance, ammunition or munitions rather, to come to that facility to be recycled. Is this another restriction that we need to write into what we're looking at?
Yeah, that's a good point. So basically, if it's not excluded specifically under the definition before you, then it could potentially be allowed to be let in under the definition if it's a type of metal that's acceptable.
I think it would be very hard to write this around for my, I just don't know how that would be done.
Thoughts, questions?
Yeah. Actually, no. I don't know how you would. Ms. Nestor Jellin, is there a way to prohibit that from, to write it in such that those kinds of metals would be prohibited?
We close public comments, sir. This is not. This is not, this is public comments done. So we're just working with staff right now on an ordinance. Thank you.
So the way that we've edited to date is that we're excluding, you know, terms that are defined in the state code. So we could refer back to the state code and see if there's something that could specifically match what you would like to additionally exclude. But it does get more and more difficult to add to that exclusion list as you go along. So I could, I could look back and see if the state code addresses that. I don't know if Tom McGlasson is also on. He's with the Solid Waste District and he's been helpful in just understanding the state code around these types of terms. And he may know on the spot, but I do not, sorry.
So we have a couple of options. We can go ahead and vote, or we can continue this item, whatever your preferences.
My preference would be to continue this and to actually try to work with Mr. McGlasson and get some more information and ask Ms. Nestor John to look more into some of the state code. I hadn't realized before that that was a possibility in terms of what could come to the facility or this kind of facility, I guess.
Yeah. The other thing that I will do as well, I feel compelled as well to reach out to the Monroe County Fire Protection District. I'll forward the reports to them and just give them that information because they may want to comment on this as well. And I'll ask them to contact you if they have questions or concerns.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate your hard work on this. It just, I, you know, what really led to this were just some things that folks had said in the community, but also I was looking up metal recycling and I kept seeing news reports of massive fires. And I got a little worried, to be honest. And it just may be that this just isn't, isn't the the right thing for us right now, but it may be that we can do something. But some of this is about equipment burning and I don't think that, that it matters what's actually being processed. And that's a real concern for me and for the public. So so someone like to make a motion on this?
Move to continue discussion of ordinance 2022-03 to amend Monroe County zoning ordinance, chapter 802 on zones and permitted use.
Second. And since we don't know how long it will take to actually compile all this information and we don't really want to, you know, rather than just name a date, can we leave this open as a, when, when planning staff is ready to bring it back? All those in favor of continuing ordinance 2022-03, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Move on to the next item, please.
You start working it, sorry. Move to approve ordinance 2022-05 Bedford Recycling Rezone from Mineral Extraction ME to Heavy Industrial, HI.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Nestor John, tell us all about this.
Thank you. So this is a specific property in Monroe County, 405 West Dillman Road that is seeking to rezone from mineral extraction to heavy industrial. And if approved, the rezon, the owner has signaled that they would be interested in scrap metal processing facility, the texts that you heard prior to this. So that is something that they're considering as a potential use. But just a note, a rezon to heavy industrial does open the property up to all heavy industrial uses. So the location here, as I mentioned, is West Dillman Road near Dillman Lane. The property does have some floodplain on the northwest corner of the site and it also exhibits some non-buildable area. The site was not utilized for quarry itself, but it has storage of old limestone blocks on the property, which are being picked up on the LiDAR map that you see on the screen. The property is zoned mineral extraction. It's surrounded to the north. It's institutional public. The wastewater treatment plant is there. And you also have heavy industrial to the east and mineral extraction to the south, as well as agricultural rural reserve surrounding this site. I believe the nearest resident is a little over 1,500 feet from the site and there is some restrictions on sort of natural buffer to the site because of the location of the floodplain as to where the nearest residences would be in terms of proximity. The comprehensive plan has, this is farm and forest and surrounding this is Makua employment on the east and north sides. And then I also wanted to note the locations of other heavy industrial zoned properties. These properties are not necessarily vacant. So Mr. Parsons, who is the owner of the property in question right now, did mention that there may not have been another property in the county for this type of use. There are other heavy industrial zoned properties, but they may or may not be vacant or have enough acreage to support this type of use. So as I mentioned, there's about 14 of them and this would be a request to create one more. I have on the screen here a capture of chapter 802. Just to give you an idea of the heavy industrial uses that are permitted in the county, if this were to be rezoned, there are several of them. And then I also have on the screen the design standards differences between mineral extraction and heavy industrial. Notably, you'll see that for mineral extraction, there is not a minimum open space requirement. But on things like rear yard setbacks, there is a decrease in the heavy industrial would be 10 feet. But in mineral extraction, it's 50 feet. But as I mentioned in the site photos, but prior, the site does have some surrounding natural buffer from the floodplain and then also mineral extraction and heavy industrial surrounding it. Here are some pictometry photos of the site as well. They would be accessing off of West Dillman Road. And they would have to seek all necessary permits for accessing through the floodway, which my understanding is they've already made progress on, on doing that to get the driveway through. Here is a capture of what their potential site plan could look like. This is just illustrative. If this rezon were to go into place and the text amendment, if this were the type of use they were seeking were to go through, we would then have to do a site plan review at staff level, which does get reviewed by the highway department, including stormwater. And we'd also, you know, reach out to the fire territory if that was a request at that time to have them take a look at the site, safety, turnaround, radii, things like that. And then we're also looking at setbacks, location of the outdoor storage area, which on the screen is on the east side, furthest away from the floodplain. But they do have oil and water, oil separator pond that is closer to the floodplain. And when I did take this to drainage board for some comments, there was some discussion about potentially when we get to the site plan stage, redesigning this site a little bit to make sure that all features are best protecting the floodplain. And because of the amount of acreage here, about 30 acres, they believe that we can accommodate that and still meet the requirements. So the plan commission did review this on February 15th and they did send a positive recommendation by a vote of six to two. And there was a condition that the business owner submit a statement for how the site will be cleaned up in the event of closure for planning staff review. And planning staff also afforded a positive recommendation. I can take any questions that you have.
I'm sorry, I may have missed it in the written material. Is this site already on sewer? And if not, would any kind of upgrade need to also involve the health department?
Yeah, so this site is not on sewer currently, but there is a rule that if you're within 300 feet of sewer, you do have to connect. So once we get to the point of site plan, we would be asking them to supply us with letters in order to confirm. But I think at this point, they have designed it with a septic in mind, but the owner can certainly speak up if that has changed since.
Thank you.
Ms. John?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Let's go ahead and hear from the petitioner, please, Mr. Parsons.
As stated before, Larry Parsons and, and stated, we do do a lot of production machining. We machine for General Motors and Ford and and other people, engine blocks, cylinder heads, and we've got currently 300 some people employed doing that type of work. And whether the, whether we ever put in the recycling operation or not, we would like to have this approved. I mean, we would like to have the zoning approved, going from mineral extraction to heavy industrial. So we have the opportunity to do something with this land in the future, other than mineral extraction. And to address your point that you brought up beforehand about explosions and fires and everything else, that has all happened at the Bedford site. There was nothing there that you've mentioned that hasn't happened. The difference between the Bedford site and this site is that this is a transfer station for ferrous metals. Those operations happen processing ferrous metals. We have a heavy torching operation in the Bedford site. At one, at one point, we processed 1,600 combat army tanks that weighed 100,000 pounds apiece. And we cut those up and the heavy torching at times would generate a fire or anything, all contained on our site. And we have a shredder which shreds automobiles. And when a propane tank gets in a shredder, whether it's a small tank or whatever, you have an explosion. But that explosion is contained in a machine that's got 11-inch thick steel walls all the way around it. And all those explosions are contained. Everything you said is true. But none of that would happen at the Bedford site because it's just a transfer station for non, for ferrous metals. And it's, so I don't disagree with anything that you said along that line. But that's not what the operation in Bloomington would be. It would be, again, similar to JB Salvage. And JB Salvage would probably, they'd be doing more torching than what we would do. They're crushing automobiles and doing different things that we wouldn't be doing at our site. We're a smaller version of what that would be as far as the type of operations being done. So in answer to what you brought up, that's true, but the bottom line is, we would still like to have this rezoning go through from mineral extraction to heavy manufacturing for future use that we may have for the property. And it's in a great location for that with references 69 and 37. And we have a long history of having successful businesses doing this. And as a letter from the city of Bedford stated, they're very happy with the performance and all that we've done in the Bedford area. And I, I don't know that we have detractors in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I just want to be clear for the public and for the board that Mr. Parsons is a petitioner on item M, which we're talking about now. But he is not a petitioner on the previous item. Because that is an ordinance for the entire county. And while members of the public and businesses and whomever may create and suggest, you create an ordinance and suggest that the plan commission and then the board of commissioners consider it, it is not an ordinance for one person. It is an ordinance for the entire county. And that's how we have to look at those things. And I just want to say that because I want to make sure there's real clarity about that. So do either of you have questions for the petitioner?
I don't have a question for the petitioner, petitioner, sorry. But I, given that we're delaying discussion of change in the ordinance, I would be very interested in continuing the discussion of this particular request for rezon until we get the, everything sorted out about heavy industrial uses. And what can go on a given property that's zoned heavy industrial.
Okay. I would agree that that may be a good plan. I would also ask Ms. Nestor John, if in, if we do continue this, that you include in our packet, the list of possible uses for this property. Because given the floodplain and given its proximity to a wetland, et cetera, it may be that this board may want to strike some of those possible uses as well, just given that list. And the size of the property is substantial, which is great, you know, and that alleviates a lot of issues. But we have to imagine that this property, if, if the property gets rezoned, that it's rezoned for anybody to use any of those uses. And so I just want to put that out there, something to think about.
We don't control what happens 30 years from now and 50 years from now.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. It goes to a site plan review, but it does not get reviewed every time whether or not a particular use. So would you, let's first see if there's anyone else who wishes to make public comment. Mark Cranley? To not hear.
Looks like he took his hand in.
Does anybody else wish to offer any comment on this item? Your support or opposition? Okay, Mark Cranley?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes. I, I am not going to belabor the points I've already made. I also understand this may be held over, but I, I do want to point out that a lot of information was promised before the planning commission that, to my knowledge, has never been received. One of which is a CARSS plan. There was a study done. I don't think it's ever been provided to the planning commissioner, the commissioners. And I would, would hope that any kind of wetlands delineation would be provided to the commissioners as well. I also want to clarify regarding the contract that we have. The, the argument was made, I believe, by, by your interim supervisor for planning that you have legislative authority to rewrite your zoning code. And of course, that's true. And we're not arguing that our contract with the district prevents you as the commissioners from doing changes to your zoning ordinance. What we're saying is that you should consider all the consequences to that action. And one of those is going to be to harm your constituents by allowing, as, as the petitioner said, a solid waste transfer station to come in here. You use those words and our contract prevents that and allows us to terminate that contract. And that will, that is, that is a bad situation for the district, as I'm sure Mr. McGlasson can, can talk to. And should be avoided for, for the benefit of your citizens. But that is, that is a situation that frankly, this project puts at issue and it's not a situation we want to be in, but it's one we have to look at to, to protect my client's interest. And one, I think the commissioners need to consider as to whether this is a worthy project for rezoning. So with that, I appreciate all of your time this morning and I thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. So just again, for the record, just so we're very clear on this, I appreciate Mark Cranley. Thank you for your comments. But I am Solid Waste District and the Solid Waste District Management Board of Directors have all stated that this use that is described by Bedford Recycling does not meet the definition of solid waste. And this is not a solid waste facility. This was an erroneous use of text amendment language at one point and, and that error has been corrected. So I just want to make that clear for the public as well. All right. So somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we continue ordinance 2022-05 on Bedford Recycling Rezone from Mineral Extraction to Heavy Industrial.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion in a second, and we're not going to name a date here. Again, to give planning staff the leeway they need to work through this. All those in favor of continuing ordinance 2022-05, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for your time. All right, so with that, we don't have any appointments today. And I will note that indeed, we do have Boarding Commission openings. So if you are interested in applying to serve on a Board of Commission, go to co.munro.us and click on the application. Just reminded everybody that this is a week where severe weather testing, tornado siren testing is getting done. And one easy way to stay connected, to stay safe during spring storm season is to sign up for the Resident Alert System. Just go to co.munro.us and click on the megaphone in the middle of the page and sign up for the alerts. There are blood drives organized at Ivy Tech. Tuesday, March 29th, 10 to 3. Wednesday, March 30th, 1 to 6. Monday, April 4th, 10 to 3. And Tuesday, April 5th, 1 to 6. Those are again on Ivy Tech. If you're interested and available, please go to redcross.org to sign up. We had, anything else from the board today?
Well, I'm wearing green to wish everybody a Happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow.
Very good. And Ms. Ridge did tell us that she, the Highway Department received an amazing grant fund for the Delman Road Bridge. And we're really excited about that. And hopefully, she will be here next week to tell us all about it. Be awesome. So kudos to Ms. Ridge and the entire staff. All right, anything else? We could have the order. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We want to come back at 11:50 for the work session. Does that work for everybody? Excellent. We'll come back 11:50 a.m. for a work session. And with that, this regular session is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Katz. And thank you, T S D, for your hard work.